Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all here. We'll call this meeting to order here in Council Chambers at 6:00 P. M. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation on the person?
You don't have to stand. Eternal Father, I pray that you will give every leader strength so they do not grow weary in their leadership role that they are assigned to do your will. Amen.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any remote electronic attendance, so we move to roll call, please.
Older person, Murphy.
Present.
Mercedes.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timmy.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Are there any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, well, we move to public comment. Is there any public comment this evening, Chief? No? So we'll go straight to our informationals. Eight point one, Moline Library Gardens Project Update. Mr. Lear, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, that you need. It's great to be with you all this evening. I don't get a chance to get up here very often. Well, it's a pleasure tonight to be able to talk to you a little bit about a project that we have had at the library in the works for a couple of years now, but it's certainly coming a little closer to becoming a reality now, and that's the Moline Library Gardens. I've got a few slides to show you this evening, but before I go into those, I wanted to give you a little background on how we got to where we are now. And it really goes back about twenty years ago when the land was acquired that is now the Moline Public Library and part of our parking lot. There was always one parcel of land that was adjacent to the library that wasn't available to purchase, but the library board always had aspirations for. Fast forwarding about twenty years to the year 2020, the land did become available for purchase, and the purchase was finalized in 2021. Last year, thanks to the Public Works Department, the two structures on that land, the house and the garage, were taken down, and that really left basically a blank canvas for us all to imagine a new library space. So about that same time, the library was developing our own strategic plan, and knowing that this property was going to be a big part of our future, we took the time to devote a portion of our strategic planning focus groups and community survey to gain public input on best uses for that land. And what we heard was a variety of responses, but a lot of them involved, you know, the words outdoors, or gardens, or green spaces, or programming spaces. So the library board was good to ask staff for their thoughts on how the land could be best used, and certainly the board had their own input as well. Since about the beginning of this year, we've been working with Shai Pattery on taking all of that public input and all of the input in developing a schematic design and a concept for the land. The board recently approved a design that we are all very excited about. In fact, we have a couple of our board members here. We have Gary Keller, who served on our steering committee, and Regina Nelson, who is going to be serving on our fundraising committee, we'll talk a little bit about as we go through that. But we really think that this is going to be a very unique property or project, something that Moline can have as a true point of pride. And I'm going to go ahead and share some slides with you here on this. Okay, so just for orientation, this is the south half of the building here. Forty-first Street is at the top of the screen. Thirty-third Avenue, of course, is on the left-hand side. The property altogether is about one acre of land. The actual gardens portion is fenced in. There's ornamental fencing all the way around the property there. There are berms that are built in on the west hand, west side of the property towards the top of the screen there that will help serve as sort of a sound barrier from all the noise there on Forty-first Street. The garden features a sixteen-panel interactive story loop. As a person goes through, they can follow a story through all sixteen different panels there. It has two pergillus shade structures, has that big circular event lawn that you see there, as well as a flexible stage and a pavilion that has storage. And that there's also, you can see that kind of the bronze part is an art feature that we'll have, and that's not necessarily what the feature's going to look like, it's just kind of there for concept at this point. Lots of seating areas in there. There, you can see there's four seat walls. There are plenty of tables and chairs throughout, lots of benches where people can find and take a little bit of a load off there. That pink tree, that beautiful magnolia tree that's in the middle there is an existing tree right now. It looks beautiful like that in the spring, and you can kind of tell that the design actually kind of went around that a little bit, so we're hopeful to keep that. Altogether, there's about twenty-five new trees that are included in the planting for this. So a couple of things to keep in mind as we're going through these images, obviously the trees and the landscaping are shown a little bit more mature than they're going to be on the first day, and then Shai Pattery did express that these are, you know, at this point, these are still concept photos. As we get into this a little bit deeper, they can continue to change a little bit. So. All right. So this is a view of the gardens if you're walking along the sidewalk on Forty-first Street. One of the things that we really liked about Shai Pattery is that they showed a lot of attention to detail. They were able to transition the existing spaces with some of these new spaces in here. So that you'll see the lighting, if you see those light posts, those look very similar to the ones we have at the front of the building. The shape of the sign complements the angles of the building. It's difficult to see in this photo, but the entry-exit vestibule that will be new in there looks very similar to the one in the front of the building as well. So this is actually one of my favorite views of probably, this is one I think is going to draw people outside from the inside of this. You can see the pedestrian bridge right there in the front of it. You get a good look at the right-hand side. You can see one of the pergillus shade structures in the back, those winding walking paths with the interactive storyboards. Plenty of places to sit again. Again, that art feature will be a focal point there, and then in the background, you can see the stage and that event lawn on the left-hand side. So. Okay, so this is a view of the property looking north, back towards the building, better view of one of those pergillus shade structures. They talked about the slats on the top of those being able to open and close depending on how much shade you'd like to have in there. You can tell that there's plenty of space under there for several tables and chairs for groups to gather. Gives you a good look at the storyboards and some of the lighting through there as well. This is a view of the plaza area. This is really, again, where you're going to see some of the attention to detail. You can see that, for example, on the entry-exit vestibule, the Moline Public Library on top, that is exactly what it looks like at the front of the building, so we thought that was pretty impressive. You can see some examples of the grasses and vegetation, all of which are going to be selected with emphasis on low maintenance. As we go through there, we want it to look good throughout the year. There is an irrigation system planned for this, so obviously we don't want to do a garden without an irrigation system. We're going to make sure that our Wi-Fi signal extends to all areas of the back of the property, and we'll certainly be looking to have some security cameras installed as well. All right. So this is the, actually, the last slide I have here for you, but it's a good look. Again, if you're in the, if you know where the children's department is in the library, this is looking out into the gardens there. On the left-hand side, you can see that there's a donor wall. It's empty right now, but we're hoping to fill that with names of people who'd like to give us projects. So, yeah, that's kind of the view again that's going to draw people out into there. So overall, this is just a space that is designed to complement our traditional indoor services and offer a variety of amenities to library users. Outdoor spaces, you may know, have become increasingly popular in recent years as libraries continue to adapt and promote interactive and inclusive environments. So certainly, there's a lot of benefits to having outdoor spaces as well, simply offering a change in scenery, a place to get fresh air, can help promote healthy lifestyles and mental well-being. We expect this space is going to mean different things to different users. This is going to be a great spot if an individual wants to curl up with a book and then sit on a bench and read. They can do that. If they want to meet with a book club or do some sort of group work, we've got those pergillus structures where they can do that. And then certainly, we have those big, those outdoor areas for programming and gathering spaces as well. So today's libraries, as you probably know, aren't quite the quiet places that they used to be back in the day. This also gives people an opportunity to be a little bit more comfortable. They have to be a little more active, make a little bit more noise, or be a little bit more messy. They can do that outside in that space as well. But really, for us, this is just a bigger chance for us to connect with the community. So the cost opinion for a project like this, provided by Shai Pattery, is about $1.4 million. And to fund the project, we're going to be looking at a number of different ways. We'll be working with Carol on some budget requests later this year we'll be bringing to you. We'll be looking to our friends at the library organization to help us out with that. We're going to be looking to local charitable organizations, and hopefully, within the next month or so, we're going to be looking to start a capital campaign, both as far as fundraising goes and grant writing as well. We do have a development person on staff that can help us with that. So if everything goes well, if everything aligns, we hope to have the design and engineering done late this fall with the project to go out to bids in the winter, and then hopefully construction in the spring and possibly opening as early as next year. So really, we just, we see this as an incredible opportunity to offer a great new library space to the community, to the residents, to ensure that the library stays vibrant as well. So at any time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, whether now or another time, if you want to come and walk the property with me, and I can show you around a little bit, certainly let me know any time, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Thank you so much, Brian. Thank you especially to the board for careful movement through this process and gathering information to guide it. I do have five questions, but I'll open it up to the council for questions. Yes, Ms. Castro, and then Mr. Timmy.
I just am curious what percentage you're hoping to fund it by fundraising and how much else?
That's all very fluid right now. We do have an idea in mind. Fundraising, we expect to be about fifteen percent of this project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Timmy?
From the renderings, I know these are all conceptual. Has there been any discussion about using native plants to reduce maintenance, absorb more water, that kind? Because I just, we have a great pavilion, now we have to spend extra money to maintain it and mow it, and so I'm just, I'm looking at things like that that could really help with, I don't know if that's been discussed at all.
We haven't gotten to that level of detail with Shai yet. I'm sure that will be discussed. Maintenance is a big issue.
I would second that. That was one of my questions. How, when you talk about low maintenance, how about pollinator plants? We have a significant, we actually have an advisory group that's related to keep enhancing pollinator gardens in the, in the community. I know they would be a wonderful partner on those kinds of things, but I think the native plants and the pollinator gardens would be something really smart to move. And then, do you mind if I launch into my questions and then I'll come back to you along those lines? I was curious, and maybe Chief Galt will have to weigh in here, but is there any desire or do you see a need for privacy fence height on that fence that's on that outside, which is, what, six feet or something? You know, more like what the Botanical Center has, you know, for their outdoor gardens? I just was thinking, you know, it's a lot harder to jump a six-foot fence and mess around at night when the library is closed.
Right, right. I think the fencing is shown at four feet in this.
Yeah.
So we hadn't talked about the idea of privacy fencing. We were looking for the curb appeal aspect as well as far as functionality.
I'd like the board to think about the security piece because we certainly don't want to continue to spend money to replace things if we can prevent it. Chief, do you have something to add?
I was just trying to visualize. So you're talking about something that would obscure the, like a mesh?
No, I mean, you can get all kinds of fence designs just at different heights, and the privacy height is six feet, at least in my experience, opposed to the slower ones that are.
I wondered what the ordinance was.
We would have to check that. So, but as we think about this, that is a moving part that I think we might want to think about.
When you said privacy, I was thinking that you wouldn't be able to see into the gardens, and I think that that would maybe add security concerns.
Correct.
We have this on the Forty-first Street.
No. Correct, just decreasing. Okay, so we'll have to check into that.
Ordnance is four. Four feet.
Four feet?
Yeah.
I was also thinking about, along the lines of the plants, given our, where we're at with climate change and increasing periods of high temperatures and the likelihood of people wanting to be outside, I would, I would say, you know, that your attention to shade structures and even water misting or something out there to keep it a place that does get used would be smart. The other thing there was, I would want to make sure that we try to keep it accessible and in use for most seasons of the year, like sort of put on a Scandinavian hat and get out there in the winter with something, you know, I mean, at least into the, at least three seasons worth of use because it's a significant investment. So that's a cultural thing, you know, what, I know there are plenty of people that don't mind being outdoors for conversation, even in chilly weather.
I agree. We'd love that to be a nine-month, out-of-year thing.
Okay. And then my last question was, the sixteen-story panels, I assume those are interchangeable? You can have different stories at different times?
Yes.
I've seen that on hiking paths. It's so great for younger ages. I love it.
Yeah.
Great idea. Thank you. Who else had questions? Mr. Mercedes?
Thank you. From start to finish, how long do they expect the project to take?
We haven't gotten into that specific timeline with Shai Pattery. It's certainly possible to have this done next year if everything goes well, though. So that is the goal right now, is to have this open at some point next year, even if it's later towards the year.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, you have another fellow?
With the maintenance, would that be contracted out, or would it be with city?
We're looking at all kinds of options right there, including the city, contracting it out, volunteers, all of that. So we know how important maintenance is going to be with a project like this, and we're going to make sure that it looks good throughout the year.
Don't forget about the collab between, like, Garden Guardians or something like that, that can maybe be a source of volunteers, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And for those of you that might aren't as familiar, maybe with Garden Guardians, that's through the Keep Moline Beautiful Committee they work through. Mr. Timmy?
Am I looking at, I just want to make sure, is this parking lot on the bottom of this?
Yeah.
Is that new?
No, that's an existing parking lot. That's kind of in the back half of the building. Not seen a lot. That's generally right now where our staff park, but we'll be working on parking arrangements, especially on event days.
Mr. Schmidt?
There's only one big note I have as I look at it, which may sound familiar to those from when I was visiting with the board. I, I would love to see a little more incorporated that is targeted toward youth usage. Like, and I'm not talking about a playground, per se, but, and that could be, as we're looking and thinking about some of these features, to make sure that it just includes pieces that make it interesting and entertaining for a younger audience, like even as we think about the art piece there, if that were something that could be climbed on or sat on and to read out of. I think, just as I look at this, I think there's a little more opportunity for, like, a reading environment that targets to the youth, not by changing out the whole thing, but just a few little details, maybe. Just as you're getting into those details, I'd just love that to be in the thought process, I guess.
Absolutely. That's something we've had continued discussions on.
Yeah.
And as we develop opportunities, naming opportunities, sponsorship opportunities, those types of things will be available for people to put in.
Yeah, and it shows, like, the kids climb down the rocks a little, which is for sure going to, one place where it definitely is, but.
Yes, Ms. Finch?
Just to go off of what Jane said, the puppet shows, the kids love doing the puppet shows, and it does get a little loud in the children's area, so if we move something, that they can be a little more louder when they're outside, when they take books and then do the puppets, that'd probably be a really good idea.
That's great. Love that. That should be real, real close to that door. The back two, so.
It's a delivery.
Thank you so much. If there's nothing else, we very much appreciate you sharing that with us.
Thank you.
And thank you again to the board for their work.
You bet.
All right. Eight point two, River, excuse me, Review Green Valley Turf Project, 2024 to '26 budget consideration and Open Space Land Acquisition and Development Grant. Mr. Griffin, you are online with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. We're just waiting on the picture. Oh, you're going to share your screen. All right.
Okay, perfect. So thank you, Mayor and City Council. I apologize for not being in person tonight. I'm actually in Oak Brook, Illinois, for the National Parks and Rec Director School, and I'll be here all week, but wanted to go through this project that was presented to you back on June 13th during the capital improvement roundtable discussion. At that time, I really didn't have all of the numbers quite yet of revenue and how much the turf was going to cost, so that's something that I wanted to show tonight to kind of get your guys' feedback and see if that's something that I'll get your general consensus on submitting an Ozlet grant. So this first slide on the left-hand side, it kind of shows what, what we're proposing is synthetic turf in the infields. The grass on the outfield would be regular grass, and everything else would be artificial turf. That does include drainage underneath the turf that would go into the existing storm sewer that's out there. Picture on the right, it's just another location where they have half-turf fields and, and then just the infield. So I'm going to go through this. If you have any questions, I can't really see you, so just maybe at the end, I'll be able to answer them.
All right, so you ready for questions or comments?
Oh, no.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, yeah, there's way more to.
Yes. So one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this to you is because of the Ozlet grant. The application is currently open from July 1st to August 31st, and it's a $600,000 matching grant that they announce the recipients in spring of 2024. And a little bit on this grant, before you submit, you have to have a pre-submital meeting with the Iowa DNR, or Illinois DNR, sorry. And we were the first city in the state of Illinois to have that meeting, and they, they absolutely loved the project. We have not applied and received an Ozlet grant since when the pool was built back in 2001, 2002, and this is something that going forward, if we don't apply for a grant like this every year, it's going to be every couple of years because we're dismissing out on state funding. So we have contracted with MSA Professional Services to help us write this grant. They're also helping us update our 2014 master plan. As part of that pre-submital meeting, there was a couple of things that we needed to do, and the first one was to amend the 2014 master plan to include turf. The master plan that was done in 2014 really didn't go into much detail over what are different parks and different improvements that we could make, and so at the last park board meeting, we amended that to include turf. If, if I get the general consensus tonight, I'll bring back on August 22nd to submit for the grant. That's part of it. I need to have city council approval. And then also have a public hearing. I found this out last week, which will have the public hearing if this moves forward at 3:30, right before the park board meeting next week. And then just like to share, as I go on, this application can be later removed or withdrew as long as it's before the applications are approved and signed off on. So we have all the way from now to early spring if, if this doesn't work out through the budgeting process. So the timeline of this project, the grant would be awarded in 2024. We would be able to do a joint purchasing agreement to start in July of 2024. July and August are kind of finishing up spring and summer ball and take a pretty much, almost a six-week break in there, where we could be able to do four of the eight fields right away. That's the fields five through eight is the back quad, and then we would be able to do two fields at a time in the front quad. This schedule will allow us for tournaments, a full set of tournaments, April through the beginning of July with a smaller fall schedule, but still be able to kind of honor the longstanding agreements that we have with the tournaments that we currently have on our schedule. So how would we pay for this? The biggest thing I want to say is that this would be a loan from the general fund. So the project is $2,353,760, which is substantially more than what was originally presented back in June. The biggest thing is the company that we were speaking with, they did not have drainage in there, and then they also didn't have prevailing wage, so we did update those numbers. I would, this would be a loan, and this would be paid back from 2025 to 2032, as you can see with the information below. The turf, the life of the turf is 11 to 13 years, and really, there's very little, little maintenance of the turf, but we would have to replace batter boxes and pitching mounds every four to five years, which is, you know, just a few thousand dollars where we could pay for that out of our operating expense. This is not the first time that we've, that the Parks and Rec has done a loan like this. We did have, the, the current lighting that's at Green Valley was a five-year that was repaid back from 2014 to 2019 as well. So the revenues and expenditures first, this shows basically what would happen if we were able to just have the four tournaments that we pretty much cancel almost every single year because of field conditions. So April and early May, obviously, is very rainy. We struggle with field conditions, and so this is just showing the, kind of the revenue that we would be able to get if we just honored the tournaments that we currently have, not even adding new tournaments because of the added amenities. And then also some practice rentals in there, being able to host more sports out there and whatnot. The expenditure cuts are from the Green Valley budget. There, our biggest struggle with Green Valley is seasonal maintenance. We keep paying them more and more every year, but unfortunately, they work nights, weekends, and holidays. They just struggle to, to keep staff out there. So we would be able to cut quite a bit of that seasonal maintenance staff and also the maintenance supplies, the diamond surface materials and the aggregate. That's all the materials that we use in the front of, or the, you know, the infields of the softball complex. And then the taxes below show just the additional four tournaments that, what, what taxes that could generate for the city. I think that this, these numbers here are pretty conservative. I think there's, I mean, we have a lot of room that we could add more and more tournaments for, and on the next slide, I'll kind of show the impact on it, on what some of these tournaments have. So this number, the sixteen tournaments that we held in 2022 had over 11,000 rooms in the Quad Cities. I'm not going to say that they were all in Moline because we don't have that many hotel rooms, but in the, in the Quad City, we try our best to work with the tournaments, work with visit Quad Cities to make sure that they're giving the best rates of hotel rooms in Moline, so then they stay here, spend their money here, go out to eat and whatnot. If we were able to do those twenty tournaments, it would increase hotels by, you know, 2,750 hotel rooms. The economic impact, it's pretty conservative as well. I did, as part of my grad studies back in 2018, I did a research paper over what the economic impact of youth sports and college sports and what parents spend on a, on a given weekend. Back then, it was $400, so I used that number for this, which is pretty, pretty low considering how much hotel rooms cost for a weekend in gas and food and entertainment. This does not count as the registration fee for the tournament. We also, so if you had to break that up between the tournaments, it has about $198,000 impact per tournament. And then one, another big reason is we're falling behind to some of the And then another big reason is we're falling behind to some of these other cities in Iowa and Illinois that have turf. Because at the end of the day, a lot of teams would rather want to play on dirt, but they want to play their game. They, with the rain that we have, they have a better chance of playing with turf if the rain stops. Where we struggle with that right now, and it takes, you know, four to 10 seasonal staff and/or we call in overtime for park maintenance to come in and get these fields up and going where as soon as the rain would stop, there might be a little bit of maintenance in the outfields, but nothing like what it takes to get the infield's ready. We also are hoping to attract some of those national tournaments back, just like the one that we had last year, where this number came from Visit Quad Cities, and that tournament had over $1254,000 impact to our region. And then finally, just showing the scenario of how this could be paid back, the return on investment over time. This, like I said, would be a loan from the general fund and would be paid off in about seven and a half years. If that included the tax from those additional tournaments, if it didn't, it would be roughly nine and a half years return on investment. And like I said, the tournament, or the life of the turf is 11 to 13 years. So, scenario number two doesn't look as great on paper as there'd only be a couple of years after that you'd have to replace the turf. I will say that when you go to replace the turf, in theory, it should only be half the price because you're not doing any of the work underground. So, you're not having to bring in any rock. You're not have to do any drainage. You're only paying for the turf. Obviously, in 11 to 13 years, we're not exactly sure on how expensive turf will be at that time. But that, you know, that seven and a half years, the remaining from 2032 to 2037 could be saved to help pay for new turf after that. So, what I'm looking here tonight, and I'll stop sharing my screen now, is only, I don't, I'm only looking if you think that this would be a good enough project to approve for me to submit the application. And then during the budgeting process, the application can be removed if there's not enough money in the general fund to fund the project. But because our calendar year and this grant don't really line up, that's what I'm requesting tonight. No questions.
So, you need a motion to approve?
No, that'll come next week.
I just need general consensus that you guys are on board with this, and then I'll bring it back next week.
All right, gotcha.
Yes.
Does that feel flood?
No.
We have. So, part of the IDNR pre-submitting meeting, as they had to look at the floodplain, there are just two of the fields in the front quad, fields one and two, have showing in the 100-year floodplain that there's water that gets onto there. Back in 2014, there was an ice jam on the Rock River, which brought almost the whole front quad that flooded. The nice thing about that is once the floodwaters goes down, we might need to add some sand to the top of it. But overall, it wouldn't be impacted very, very much.
Mr. Timmy?
I just want to make sure I'm thinking about this correctly, and Carol, maybe you can tell me if I'm wrong. If the park program's primarily funding, primary funding source annually is from the general fund, what is the purpose of allocating money annually to the park program to have it reallocated back to the general fund? Because it feels like the repayment is just repaying ourselves from ourselves. And that feels a little, why not just pay for it and be done with it and realize the same?
I would say on that same, in that same vein, it does concern me that the payback period is seven years, and we'd already be looking at replacement in four years from then. And that's, you know, the repayment period is over half of the life cycle of the initial installation. So, that is a definite concern of mine. I appreciate all the information, though. I understand why this is an interesting and valuable project for our community and our entire region. I'm sure Visit Quad Cities would be really excited about that. I do know they were also quite excited about potential major, major pickleball tournaments. And that's been put on hold because the tennis courts are put on hold. So, I think we have a little bit of an issue of what's in the queue already that we also have to think about. And I think, Mr. Vitas, you had some comments on this for tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And first of all, Eric, thanks for a great presentation. Much appreciated. And the project itself is a great project. No question about that. And the fact that we haven't applied for an OzLED grant for as long as you said, we haven't applied for one, is just remarkable. I mean, I've worked in cities where they apply for them annually, you know? And you might get them every other year based on fund availability. So, you know, I understand that. I also understand the timeline. I also understand the, you know, the advanced commitment and then the ability to withdraw later before the applications, as you pointed out, actually get approved. But as you said, it has to get through this budgeting process. So, really, the issue for council is really twofold. You know, is this a project that you can support, at least the, in principle, going forward with the grant application, knowing that you are a long way off still from making any final determinations on a budget adoption, which won't happen until November, hopefully before Thanksgiving is the goal. So, that's part of the issue. The other issue, I think, and Eric, you're gonna have to speak to this because I think it's important. You know, since 2021, 2022, even under the old council and under the leadership of the, you know, half the council that's here now, we took it upon ourselves to reach out into the community significantly. There was community engagement that went on very heavily related to the Urban Land Institute programming that was done under the leadership, actually, of Renew Moline. And during that process, there was a lot of discussion about the skate park and the pump track. And I know we all remember that, you know? And that became a concept that, through debate, actually made it through the vetting process. And 400-plus, and Alex will correct me if I'm wrong, but over 400 individuals in this community spoke up in favor of that project. And it led the council, the former council, to believe that that was a project that we should consider funding in the future, right? We were still not quite there, but we're close, very close. And you've been working closely with one of the top companies in the country to develop those schematics and those preliminary designs for consideration by IDOT. So, that's very much a real project, that's very much out there. You know, and that's about a two to two and a half million-dollar project that has no funding source for it today. I'll repeat that. It has no funding source for that today. And Carol, you did point that out in an email to all of us earlier, okay? So, then we get beyond that, and then we get into our whole discussion about the swimming pool. And as you know, there was tremendous community engagement in that because that is the modus operandi of this administration. So, we went ahead and we did that. And we had significant input that went, you know, out to the community. There was input that came back to the park board and to the city as a whole and to this council, you know? And at the end of the day, the economy changed, the world changed. Supply chains went bad, prices shot up over 30, 35%. And what would have included, compared to what we're building today, they were building our pool. They were building in these parking lots that are there. But absent from that construction was offices for parks and recreation. Absent from that construction was the footsaw courts. And absent from that construction was the tennis courts. Again, publicly vetted, committed to programming that we wanted to do. So, we have to keep that in mind, you know? Those projects, whether it's the tennis courts, the footsaw auctions, the skate park, or this Green Valley turf project, you could use OzLED for numerous projects, playgrounds, beach improvements. You can use it for multiple purposes. So, as the council goes forward and thinks about this, you know, all of these programs that were vetted through, the council vetted through the park board and understood by the community at large that took the time to participate in those engagement sessions, you know, are expecting something to come from those. And what we have now is we have one project that seems to have advanced beyond the others that, back in '21. I don't remember talking about it. I remember talking about it even in '22. I support it, but I question the timing and how we're going to get all the other projects done with the limited funding resources that the city has. That's the challenge, and that's the challenge this council will have if you approve going forward with the OzLED grant for Green Valley turf improvement project. During budget deliberations, you will be, have to make some tough choices as to who's going to go first, who's going to be happy, who's going to be disappointed, and the impact that has. Because I have a rule, and it's a rule I've stuck to through my career. Do not overcommit. Don't go out and engage citizens. Never engage the citizens unless you plan on delivering the result. Because to do otherwise is hypocritical or hypocritical, and it will come back to bite us all. So, you're gonna have to balance the financial needs of the city versus the projects. And again, they're all wonderful projects. It's a question of what's gonna come first.
I appreciate those thoughts. I'll open it back up to the council. But I also wanted to say that I agree with your sentiment on commitment. I think it's really, really, really important that we, as an organization, maintain and improve the residents or the community's trust in the organization. And if we forget about promises made or conversations had, that doesn't bode well for keeping or building trust in the organization and what we will deliver for them. So, that's just another further thought. And also, Mr. Griffith, I understand why you would put a public hearing ahead of the park board meeting. But I think if this council were to say, yeah, go ahead and follow your chronology here, and we'll see what happens later, I think that it would be much smarter to do it after the public, or sorry, after the board meeting. It's less convenient for board members. It's less convenient for staff. But it's when more of the community is available. And I just don't think we have to be too rigid on the, between the hours of eight and five for something as significant as parks, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. I was just, with it being a shorter meeting, if park board members wanted to stick around, that's why I was trying to have it before the meeting. We only have a couple of things on our agenda, and if I say, you know, five o'clock, but we get done at 4:00 p.m., that's why I was trying to just go at the meeting.
Indifference to serving the public, I think it should probably be later. But that's, neither here nor there at the moment. So, what other questions or comments you have? Yes, Mr. O'Brien, and then Mr. Timmy?
I think, Eric, you did an excellent job on this. And I tell you, when we get this kind of income, that gets my attention. I mean, this project will bring in revenue. I'm not so sure. We know the pool's not gonna bring us a whole lot of revenue. We're spending a lot of money on that. And I'm not so sure about these other projects. They may very well bring in revenue, but, I mean, this is, he's done a good job in showing us how much revenue we're losing right now when these diamonds flood out. And, you know, it's an improvement, I think, to the whole area down there. And especially if you can recoup the tournaments that you've lost because of the, you know, if you lose people a certain amount of time, and you can answer this, Eric, are they gonna come back? Or, you know, there's plenty of places they could go, right?
Unfortunately, we've had a couple of that. We're just able to get into the TBK across the river last minute. And, you know, our director meeting is coming up next month, and, you know, we're hoping that they do come back. But, you know, April's kind of a, you know, it's tough with weather. I will hit on what the mayor said real quick, if that's okay. So, in September, I'll be bringing back the skate park and the tennis and the footsaw. I will also bring back the information that I sent in a memo to City Council. Boy, I can't quite remember the date, so I apologize. That does talk about some regional pickleball tournaments that is possible if we do resurface or redo the tennis courts, which, I mean, the tournament that's currently held in September every year does bring in over 400 players. But those regional tournaments can bring over 1,000 people. So, I will bring that information back as well, so then you can see what kind of tournaments new tennis would bring along with the pickleball courts.
Okay. So, is it safe to say that if the council said tonight, yeah, we approve of you going ahead and looking at this one for the OzLED, I don't remember, OzLED, grant, we still have flexibility on whether we go ahead with funding that or other things down the road because you are bringing more back to us? Is that a fair understanding?
Yeah, this is just approval of the, you know, to submit the application. We've got five to six months to pull the application before it's announced that we, you know, received one or didn't receive one. It's just a timing issue as of right now.
And would it, would you have a timing issue if the council said to pull that application and go for some of the other projects instead?
Applications due August 31st, so we really wouldn't have any time to.
This one this year or nothing? Okay.
And we can apply for the grant every single year.
Understood.
I would just say, we don't want to lose any more tournaments to Iowa. I hate when that happens. I really do.
I'll call on everybody. Mr. Timmy had his hand next, and then Mr. Schmitt?
The, I guess that my first question, and I have kind of two. Is it too late then to apply for the OzLED grant for the skate park or the footsaw courts? Is this just a timing issue now?
Well, the skate park, unfortunately, so next week, we're supposed to have a meeting with the consultants to go over. We already know the feedback that we've received, but have yet to see renderings of the 30% completion. And we don't even have a cost estimate at this point. The cost estimate that Mr. Vitas talked about is a project out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota that just broke ground a couple of weeks ago and is, has been designed by New Lions Skate Park. So, that was the best estimate that we could give at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Schmitt?
As I'm reviewing this, it looks like if we do not receive this grant, this project comes to revenue neutral and not, doesn't make sense to move forward with. Do you agree with that, based on how the numbers would come out without that $600,000 off the top?
I would recommend not to do it.
Without the, if the grant were not awarded?
Yeah, if we were not awarded the grant, I would not, I would not do the project. I would recommend not doing the project.
Okay. And is there, is there an opportunity to only do half of the diamonds? Like, I guess, and I'm asking in part on the size of tournaments that we're dealing with, like this spring weather issue, if those are smaller, or if it is a spot where, no, we need all eight, or it doesn't make sense?
I would say over half the tournaments that we use, use both quads. It could be six fields. It could be eight fields. There's probably only a handful of them that only use four of them. So, in this case, it doesn't seem to make sense to only do half.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else with questions at this time? Yes, Mr. Rozak?
I have a question about future. The life of the project is 13 years, and for that, the cost is $2 million plus. But after 13 years, what will happen? Who? Who will have to start over everything new? Or then if you want to continue the project, what would be the cost?
I think, did you understand that one?
Yes, so you would not have to replace, you'd only have to replace the turf that's on top. You would not have to do any of like the dirt work underneath or replace any rock or replace any drainage. So in theory, if the price stayed the same in 14 or, you know, 13, 14 years, the cost of the turf would be, you know, just over a million, you know, 1.1 million to replace instead of the 2.3, because you're only doing half the work.
Thank you. Mr. Macias, you had a question?
Thank you. I totally agree with Mr. O'Brien. Looking at the revenue later that could be, just keeping those tournaments and securing that they don't get canceled, it's a smart move. And I also do worry about not maintaining facilities we already have as opposed to new projects that might be coming. If we just leave them as the status quo, we really are at a disadvantage. You know, you mentioned the TBK bank facilities. We really need to keep up, in my opinion, with the complex that we have here. So, but, and after all, you know, if we find we don't get the grant, we might not go through with it. But it's an opportunity to tap into some funds that we don't necessarily have to do if we don't get the funding.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just as an added wrinkle, if every 13 years, it's 1.1 million to replace the turf, which will go up as America. This is, this is adding an extra $100,000 per year amortized over approximately, which is the savings we're getting for maintenance staff. Therefore, it is becoming pretty neutral in terms of budgetary. So I mean, I think if we're looking at this as cost savings, there will be compounded costs for the replacement over time. So I, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out. And it does kind of change the math a little bit.
Okay. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
But also, you will lose, continue to lose tournaments, if I understand it right. So I guess we have a decision to make here, whether we want to have, you know, Green Valley be a place where there's a lot of tournaments and we get a lot of revenue off of it, or, you know, go the other way. I guess if I'm allowed to, can I ask one more time? To move this forward tonight, you just need a, like a thumbs up from us?
Correct.
For those of us that won't.
Let's do our thumbs up version of consensus. Can I see how many people are willing to move it forward at this point? Okay, that's unanimous from the council people. So we'll look forward to more information and wish you luck on getting it approved. As long as we pass it all next week.
I appreciate everyone's time tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Enjoy your professional development.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. With 8.2 finished, we move to 8.3, I-74 corridor Riverfront Master Plan Proposal. Is this a team of folks coming forward? Ms. Elias and Mr. Mathias. Good Lord, you rhyme. Thank you so much.
Well, I'll just say, I know this project's been a long time coming for those in CED and Renew Moline and that sort of thing. So Alex is going to start us off tonight. MKSK is also on the line. They're going to, when Alex is done, pick up with the presentation there here on the Moline Riverfront Master Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Ryan Putty, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to talk to you and give you just a little bit of background. So this first presentation is really intended just to sort of catch you up on where we've been the last five years. That's how long I've been at Renew Moline. And just with some staff vacancies that you've had, I've been sort of leading some of the redevelopment discussions for the I-74 area. So it's a pleasure to share this with you. I'll also just tell you by way of background, I grew up in Davenport. I left for 30 years, and along the way, I got a master's degree in city and regional planning and worked in San Diego for a number of years for the city's redevelopment agency, during which time I managed a major waterfront redevelopment project that was happening downtown. So if you've seen downtown San Diego recently around the Bay, that was my project. I tell you that because this is the reason I came back to the Quad Cities. And that is not an overstatement. It doesn't, it doesn't mean to sound dramatic. I believe in this opportunity. I believe that it's once in a generation, and I believe it's going to be special. So with that little introduction, I'll just give you a little more background. So when I got here five years ago, the bridge was still under construction. It had been worked on for many, many years by many people that were not me. And so this was sort of the starting point. Of course, it's done now. And my first question as a city planner was, what is going to happen to the downtown as a result of this bridge? And that was really my starting point. So if you've been to the Renew Moline office and seen my little tracing paper exercise that hangs over one of my, one of the aerials, that turned into this image. And this was really trying to get all of the plans, not the ordinances so much, but the plans for the area, all on one image, and then start to ask the questions about what that could be and would be. The other thing that I was looking at was the circulation of downtown changed when the bridge went in. So Fifth Avenue used to penetrate all the way through. The other thing that you would have noticed about the old bridge is that it was very transparent at the ground level. So it was on piers for the most part. And so if you were standing and the bridge was there, you would generally see through it if you were at the ground level. And that is going to, and that changed as a result of the new bridge. So that terminus at Fifth Avenue, I thought was a significant impact. And I wondered as a planner, how would that change our downtown? The other thing I noticed was that a lot of these sites started to sort of organize themselves into private development sites and public development sites. Certainly, the Riverfront seemed like a place that was more public in nature because people naturally want to access the river. And then some of these other sites that sort of evolved out of, you know, land assembly and things that I could see happening. So I started to organize these into some of these areas. Site one I saw as, you know, the main kind of impact area from the bridge coming down. Certainly, when the city made the very important decision to acquire the Bridgepoint property, combined with the state's right of first refusal that it now offers to municipalities statewide, that was a game changer. And so this area, you know, the potential of this area really was unleashed at that point. And so that 2022 was a really important year for that area. I also put on this map some of the things that I knew were happening. The 3.8 acre development site, of course, is the one that you see right when you get off the bridge. In early 20, yeah, 2019, the then mayor and council voted to endorse the concept of a Riverfront Park. And they didn't put any details on it. They didn't say how big, how much, whatever. But they really thought it was important to put a stamp that this should be a public space. So we really started out those years ago with that as a premise. And then from a planning standpoint, and from all of my years in San Diego, downtown San Diego was very focused on where can you see the water? What streets can you see the water from? And how do we make people feel like the water is close? And I found that we have the same challenge here. So I started to ask myself, how do people get to the river? River Drive is called River Drive, but you can't really see the river from there. But how could you make people feel like the river is close? And that was kind of the starting point. So this, of course, I like this illustration because you can see with all the different colors and all the different ownerships, what a checkerboard it would have been had those two things not happened in 2022. So the acquisition of Bridgepoint, all that orange belongs to the city now. The lighter blue is the area that will be disposed of by IDOT that the city has a right of first refusal on. Again, a game changer. And then I also, and I actually want to recognize Chris Mathias at this point because Chris and I worked on this, gosh, what, three years ago, just to lay out kind of what we were thinking, what were the opportunities and challenges. So it's great to have Chris back. And then some of the more private development sites, that Site 2A, as I was calling it at the time, that's the 3.8 acre one that's right in front of you when you get off on River Drive. And then 2B was more along the 19th Street corridor, but certainly has private development opportunities. So we tried to just sort of organize things that way a little bit. And then we didn't want to ignore east of the bridge. You know, there are opportunities that happen there. So this was kind of our starting point for a discussion with the Urban Land Institute. I put this timeline together just to show you that in 2014 and 2016, you have very good planning documents in Moline. Those are two very good planning documents. They recognized that the bridge is coming, but they didn't talk about things like the impact of losing Fifth Avenue connection and some of those other things that I've been talking to you about. So in, and then the city, of course, owning the Spiegel Building was another important development. So in April of '21, we contracted in a partnership with the city, Renew Moline and Metro Link, with the Urban Land Institute, to try to just pose some of those questions to some great national thinkers about what that could be. And that really started our process. Of course, those other items that we've already kind of talked about. But I will point out that the January '22, many of you sitting here endorsed some of the concepts that were in that ULI report. So the ULI report is still available on our website. You know, the relationship that we began with ULI in 2019 continues today. They were here just in March and have been very impressed with what we've been doing. But we really, you know, have taken that time to chat with them about what those ideas could be. And they came up with five. So I always try to synthesize the ULI report down to five things, three of which we are actively working on. It's not that we aren't actively working on the other two. But the Milltown Basin was that area right next to the Riverfront that they suggested potentially trying to bring the water in board. If we couldn't get River Drive to the river, you know, maybe we could bring the water in. Some kiosks potentially. The Great River Park was really just about activating the Riverfront itself. And then the heart of the arts district in the Spiegel Building, skate park, which Mr. Griffith talked about a little bit, and residential development are all things that are being pursued right now. So the Spiegel Building, I won't go into detail on these except to say that we have a story map that's currently on Renew's website that kind of tells a little story about what that could be. We've phrased it as a question, so folks tell us what they think about some of those ideas. All you have to do is sort of go to our website, it pops right up, and just scroll through and you'll see what those are. This is the image of where the skate park could potentially be. We've intentionally, in partnership with Mr. Griffith, we've recommended structuring the contract. So you're exploring this at the 30% level. You can have a conversation with IDOT about making sure that they will be able to permit it and then decide at some, at a future date, whether or not the project goes forward. But we've intentionally tried to carve it up. And then the Milltown Basin, of course, all about activating the Riverfront. When we went to the council in January of 2022, all of those ideas that ULI had were endorsed, except the zip line and except the waterspout. So, you know, the zip line and the waterspout were just intended to be big ideas. We didn't constrain their thinking at all. Big ideas that would really bring people down to the waterfront. And then this, of course, is the 200 acres of in-water that they said was underutilized and should be activated more. Obviously, the rowing club is there, and so, you know, you need to be sensitive to that. But those are some of the ideas. And then the skate park, of course, there's another image of some of the more recent work that's been going on there. So last fall, I guess Mr. Vitas directed that we go out with a request for expressions of interest for this area and to really try to take some of these big ideas that ULI gave us and synthesize them more into a clear path toward private and public development that would enhance our city, bring people, retain talent, all the things that from a policy standpoint, you are seeking. And so we had a really great response. The presentation that you're seeing today was a modified version of one that was given to a pre-submital conference. We, one of the things that we find is that when we go out and personally invite companies that we are interested in working with to propose on these things, we get a much better response. So we had 65 people show up to a pre-proposal conference because they're interested in this project. These are world-class firms. This is a world-class opportunity. So we think that's consistent. And to just synthesize all of that into, we interviewed five very, very qualified firms. Any of them could have done a great job. We're fortunate to have that caliber of experience and quality in the firms. And MKSK was recommended for the contract. The photo that's behind those words there, if you've been to the Wharf in Washington, DC, you've seen their work. I was there in September three years ago and was, I didn't know that MKSK designed it at the time, but I was so impressed by the quality of those public improvements. They are timeless. If you look at the John Deere Pavilion, which was built in the early 90s, it is timeless. It is extremely high-quality materials. It is beautiful. It is durable. It is all of the things that you want in a Riverfront, and it is very much what MKSK does. So on the left, your interview panel, Mr. Vitas, Mr. Griffith, Tony Loti, who's obviously an important component, having the water department next door, Jennifer Bizari, me, and my board chairman, who also represents Deere, are unanimous recommendation to you is that is MKSK. So the reasons that we are recommending them are kind of on the right there. One of the things that they talked to us about was the importance of your first project out of the gate and rightsizing that first project. So not just being very thoughtful about what you're proposing. The other thing that they talked about was making your private development part of your public amenity package. And so if someone's coming in with a private development, this is what they're going to see from the public side. So it's always a partnership. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Vitas, I think, or Mr. Mathias.
Sure.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Well, I want to, I want to thank Chris for your previous work and welcoming you back to continue where you left off. Obviously, it's moved, the needle moved, and you're back at the right time, exactly the right time. And I want to, of course, I want to reach out to Alex because I think she did an outstanding job working with Ryan in the front end of this process in my office and getting us to where we are today. We're going to have the principal in charge, as well as the project manager, who will be presenting to you this evening. They are online, and that would be Brett Widel, as well as Donald Zell, I think it's Zellfro, not Zella-Fro, but Zellfro. Hope I got that right and didn't butcher it. Being a linguist, I would hope not. But anyhow, no, I think the point that we're at right now is ideal. I mean, we're sitting at a point where, you know, a year from now, we can't predict where the economy is going to be and what the interest will be for development a year from now. But in order to get where we want to go, we have to plan it out properly. I've said since day one, two years ago, when I first met Alex, you know, it's one of the reasons why I wanted to be here, because I saw this as a golden opportunity to have a legacy project to leave behind for this city. And this is that project. There's no question about it, the waterfront, access to that waterfront and that corridor, and reactivating that part of the western, I'll call it the west side of the bridge. And just as importantly, as Pat will know, I have always said, there's the east side of the bridge, you know, where we created the tiff. And you'll see roads, improvements happening down there, and sidewalk projects. So we are delivering on our commitment. This project in particular, and the presentation you're going to see tonight, is the presentation that we, as a panel of interviewees, actually had a chance to listen to along with four others. And as Alex pointed out, they're a world-class firm. No argument, no question. I, like Alex, have been to DC because my son lives there. I had an opportunity to see that last year, earlier this year, when my first grandson was born. And we went there, and I was just so impressed with what I saw. At that time, I didn't know who MKSK was. I had no clue. So I couldn't be more pleased that a firm like this, with a track record of great success across the country, would have an interest in working here with us locally. So with that, without further ado, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd like to turn it over to Brett, because I believe she's the leader of the gang on that end. And take it away, Brett.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vitas. Can you all hear me okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to try to share my screen too, so give me a second here. Let's see. Can you all see that?
It's a blank screen at the moment, but it's a white screen.
Yeah, it appears to be loading. And while that loads, can everyone hear my audio all right?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, just letting you know if that's not showing up still.
Yeah, we don't, we.
We see.
If you have multiple monitors, we're seeing the monitor with the meeting.
Okay, one second. Sorry about that. Let's try this. Is that working now?
Almost. There we go.
Great, okay, technology's working. Thank you so much, City Council, Mayor, everyone for having us this evening. We really are honored to be here truly and say that from the bottom of our heart because it has been a process and we've been so excited to be a part of it from the moment we got involved this past year. So just to kick it off, I want to introduce myself. My name is Brett Widel. I am the MKSK Chicago Studio Leader. I am the MKSK Chicago Studio Leader. I'm also a landscape architect and a principal with the firm. And we're just so honored to be here to discuss this impactful opportunity for the city of Moline, the beautiful Mississippi Riverfront, but also this corridor, this sort of newly discovered corridor that's now here along the bridge and the highway that runs through the downtown. So I will go through sort of an abbreviated version of our presentation. It was a bit longer than this, but we want to be mindful of time here. So I'll just kind of go over a couple of these slides quickly. But first, just to introduce a little bit more about our team. Donnie, I want to hand it over to you, and then we can introduce who else is a part of our team here.
Well, yeah, y'all have already had the opportunity to learn a little bit about Brett. I'm a colleague of hers in the Chicago office. I'm a landscape and urban designer and a certified planner. Have spent my time in my career thus far, working with communities like Moline, you know, sort of reconnecting with themselves, reconnecting with the resources that make them, you know, unique, special, beloved by the people who visit and call it home. So incredibly excited to serve in the role as project manager for this effort and very excited to embark on this journey with you all. So excited to see you in person here in the next couple of months and many times thereafter.
Yeah, thank you, Donnie. And we wanted to share a little bit more about the other members of our team. Some of the faces you're seeing on the screen were present during our interview, but I'll just quickly speak to the firms that they represent. So as a part of our team as well, in conjunction with MKSK, because MKSK will be the lead on the project, providing city planning, urban design, and landscape architecture services. We would also have a firm called Lake Flato Architects. They would be providing sustainable architectural services. Altogether Studio, which is a community engagement firm. We'd also have EMH&amp;T, which is a civil engineer specializing in riverfront flood, floodplain management. Sam Schwartz, which is a transportation engineer focused in connectivity and mobility planning. Development Strategies, which would provide economic development and market analysis to the project, as well as Miles McClellan, which is a construction cost estimator, which will assist in developing cost projections for the project. So we had a lot of faces at the interview. We wanted to bring everyone to the table because it's a very important project for your downtown, and we needed all of the right experts in the room and to be actively a part of this team. I'll also share quickly just a little bit more about MKSK. You know, as I mentioned, we're a collective of planners, urban designers, landscape architects who are passionate about people and place. We have 12 regional studios throughout the Midwest and South, and we help communities that are like Moline explore context-sensitive solutions that meet the challenges of a changing global condition. As we know, you know, just from what's going on in the world right now, things are changing very quickly from a climate perspective, and these are pressing issues of sustainability and resiliency that we have to confront. And so we see that as a huge part of this project as well, and we'll talk about how we're planning to integrate that through our process. But we build on your local strengths. Moline has so many amazing qualities to it, so we build on those. We build for the people that live there, that are from there, that visit places like Moline. And we build for long-term value. This is something that's going to be a fixture within the downtown for many years to come, hopefully generations. And so we see this as such an amazing opportunity. Just quickly, a couple of slides that we spoke to were about our design process. We're very dedicated to participation and engagement, being a leader, being a partner to the city, to Renew Moline throughout this process, but most importantly, the community with whom the project is going to impact the most. And so we just talked a little bit more about how that process is very collaborative and how the outcomes sort of come out of that process. We talked about, you know, the context, which Alex covered really well in her intro presentation, so I won't go into detail on this too much, but we are focusing specifically on an area where 18th Street is sort of the western boundary, 7th Avenue on the south. And then, you know, we're looking also at a secondary study area with 25th Street, sort of on the eastern boundary. So we realize the bridge runs through the site and that that has changed a lot of the connectivity through downtown, and a lot of those connections that were there for many years are now changed connections. And, you know, the riverfront is such an important asset to the site and to the downtown. And so we really want to start to uncover how those assets can sort of develop and be catalysts for future, for future growth and future development in the downtown and spur that vibrancy. We've settled our proposal around these sort of six pillars, core principles, that, you know, we want to create together. We want to work with your community, with your city stakeholders, with the partners to develop this plan because that's who it's for. We want to invest in a strong public realm because that's the framework with which we can build a strong development. We want to define a new district that has a distinct character, and so this will become a new addition to the city, and it needs to be vibrant and have an amazing sort of branding and messaging behind it. And we want to connect all these assets together. There's so many wonderful things downtown already, and creating this new asset needs to be connected to everything else that currently exists, so it kind of starts to work together cohesively. And overlaying all of that, we know that having a healthy river leads to having a healthy community. And so we really want to focus on the flood protection aspect of this planning study because the river is such an important part of the ecology of downtown and the Moline community as a whole. So we talked quickly, and I'll go over these very quick and from a high level, but, you know, MKSK, we're passionate about communities, riverfronts. We've worked in many cities throughout the Midwest and South, as I mentioned, Chattanooga, Louisville here, to develop riverfront planning design concepts that really, you know, they consider what's downtown presently and how to meld into the existing framework. And so they bring assets together, new assets, to sort of complement what's there in the downtowns already. You know, what's needed? Are there open spaces needed? Are there interactive features needed, like fountains? Are there event spaces needed, sculpture, things of that nature? You know, the DC Potomac River waterfront was mentioned, and so, you know, this is a very vibrant sort of shopping, retail, commercial district right against the Wharf there. And how do those things work together to create, you know, a 24/7 destination that's also a very livable community where people want to, you know, they want to invest, they want to put down roots. We spent a lot of time talking about the Columbus, Ohio riverfront. This is a project I've been very involved with over the years and just showing, you know, some of the befores and afters because we've been involved for a long term, you know, over 20 years, working with the city of Columbus to develop their riverfront from a place that was a lot of concrete and a lot of hardscape and a place where people didn't really visit into a livable community where there's destinations and parks and where that riverfront is sort of the thread between all of these things that sort of knits it all together. And so today, you go to downtown Columbus and you see, you know, miles of beautiful, accessible connectivity and trails and interconnection to retail districts and housing districts that are along, along this sort of riverfront. These projects have been catalysts to bring new residential into these communities, so 2,000-plus residential units right downtown. They attract people on a weekly basis throughout the season for special events, and they bring private investment. So as Alex was saying, that this is a blend and sort of an intertwining of public and private investment working together to see these outcomes. And so we spoke a little bit more about our technical expertise when it comes to these projects, working with our civil engineer, EMH&amp;T, who we've done several projects together with, including the Columbus Riverfront Project. We spoke about this Unity Park Project in Greenville where, you know, an amazing community amenity was developed through partnership with the community there, but it was in a floodplain zone, and so we really needed to work through some of those challenges having to do with resiliency from a floodplain standpoint and knowing that these sites are going to flood, they're going to get inundated, but, you know, how do we react to that? How do we provide a site that can bounce back from those things and is resilient from those flooding? Because it's not going to happen less. We know it's going to happen more and more over time, and so we want to be creating systems that can react positively to these climatic conditions that we're facing. And so we also spoke about how that relates from an architecture standpoint, and especially in an area like this where we have architecture and infrastructure within the floodplain potentially, we need to make sure that that infrastructure is resilient as well. And so Lake Flato has some wonderful experience working on infrastructure projects and architectural development, sorry, within the floodplain. I skipped ahead for a second. Sorry about that. But just to say that we are considering that and want that to be at the heart of how we consider development within this area. We need it to be resilient because we need to look to the future of how climate change is affecting us in the Midwest. And that isn't only to say we're thinking about water, we're thinking about other elements as well. You know, as we're even seeing in Hawaii right now, wind, fires, heat, air pollution, these are all things that we're facing. And with proactive strategies, we can address some of those in how we plan for the future with our master planning efforts. So we're excited to come equipped with some of those skills and expertise to, you know, sort of tackle some of those challenges. We also spoke about sort of repurposing existing infrastructure. This was a 1900s brewery in San Antonio, Texas, that our partner, Lake Flato, worked on, an old historic building that was sort of repurposed into a brand-new district called the Pearl District in San Antonio on the river. And so we spoke about how, you know, existing buildings, sometimes they can be seen as a detriment and something that has to be dealt with, torn down and modified, but, you know, sometimes these buildings are classic and they're beautiful in other ways, and they can be repurposed. And so in the case of this project, they repurposed an old warehouse into a hub for the Culinary Institute of America, and they sort of built this development around that culinary institute with that framework in mind that this was going to be the hub of culinary arts. And so this district evolved with that in mind as the core piece, but there were other elements and other ingredients that sort of made this a livable community too, you know, from the waterway to livable streets where festivals could be had, where people can live, you know, above storefronts and retail districts, et cetera. So it's a really beautiful example of how we sort of approach our work as well and sort of overlap these uses to create a livable community. And so that led us to, you know, understanding the Spiegel Building that's on site today and how can we leverage what's there currently? How can we think about potentially leveraging that building or other aspects of the site as catalytic development into the future? And those are conversations, you know, as Alex mentioned, that are ongoing, and, you know, we spoke a little bit about, you know, just some of the plans that are on the table for that building as well that we would be looking into further and having conversations with them about. So just quickly to our process, we wanted to make sure it was understood, our process is very engaging with the community. We want to bring the community into this process from the beginning and be involved throughout. And the goal of that is so that we can, if we can, bring the community to the site even, activate the site, get people to experience the site in a new way because it's a place people haven't inhabited. There's been a bridge there, there's been a highway there. And so if we can get people there as a part of our process and activate the site, we can start to utilize those experiences to build upon. And that's just the beginning of this project moving into the future. Branding and identity, this is something we touched on as well, given the network of high-capacity roadways that run through the site right now, some of the connections and disconnections that are there currently. We really want to make sure that people that live there, but also visitors coming to this destination, know how to get around, they can connect to other amazing things within the downtown community as well. So this isn't just one, one project in isolation. We're thinking about the whole of downtown and how it fits into that puzzle, and then how people can sort of access these other aspects of the community. So we talked about another project where we had done, you know, like a historic trail throughout the downtown and connected those destination points together. And so lastly, where does this bring us? So we want to come about in this process, which is about an 11-month process with final deliverables that are going to be really usable for the city. We want to deliver a master plan package that includes an implementation action plan, somewhat like what you're seeing on the screen, but it would include strategies for how to go about creating this district and priorities for how to get there. And so the most important thing is that we settle on, what does that anchor project look like? What is that catalytic development that's really going to set this district into motion? And what's going to get us to that point? So we hope to come out of this with a financing plan, a marketing plan, to really put that first project out on the table, a way to get momentum behind that and get it moving. And so that's sort of where we capped it off. We sort of summarized here, you know, that Donnie and I, we're from here, we love the Midwest, and we live here. We're invested in bringing world-class design to the Midwest, especially cities like Moline. We're bold thinkers, strategic implementers. We don't shy away from big ideas. We want to have those conversations. We care about enduring and resilient landscapes, riverfronts, sites, downtowns. It's very important and core to what we do, and we understand how cities work. So we're your committed partners along the way. I will leave it at that. We thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight to share with you, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you so much for all that detail and helping us get to know you a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
Council members, questions? Representatives? Anything? It's so thorough, you're processing it all. Well, you think I have, find some words to say? No, actually, I really appreciate your emphasis on bringing the community into the process. And I have spoken with some older people who have received ideas from folks. I've gotten emails over the course of the last two years of people who have ideas for the space, and it's very clear they need an outlet for that. And the proper place for that is in the process that you will, will put together for us. And so I'm very glad to hear your commitment to bringing the public in and especially bringing them to the space. Very few people have been able to go into Bridgepoint and, and see what's there at the moment or walk around it or around Spiegel or in Spiegel or any of those things. Not that we're opening all that up to everyone, but even on the council level, you know, bringing people into the space, I think, will be a really great asset. So thank you for including that thoughtfulness. Just to clarify the process, Mr. Vitas, this comes for a formal action next week?
Yeah, we will be, Madam Mayor, members of council, we have been working on the contract to retain the services of MKSK and the planning and the consortium that they've assembled. That project document will come forward to you this Friday when we release the agenda or earlier if we can. But it will be, it will include a contract between the city and MKSK. It will include a very refined and detailed scope of work that's based upon the RFP that they submitted, the meetings that we've held with them, and some refinements that we went through. And, and I believe we're there, I might be wrong, but I think we're there as of today. So it's really an outstanding scope of work. I think it'll explain everything that Brett said tonight in just a few short pages, but you can go through it and you can actually see the project timeline and all the deliverables at every step of the way. So, you know, I, I'm thrilled that they're with us. I'm hoping council will feel the same way next week, Tuesday, on the 22nd, when it's presented for a vote, for council for approval. And if all goes well, they will launch in September. And it will be done this time next year or a little bit earlier, depending how well things go, so.
All right. If there's nothing further, thank you so much again for joining us tonight. Oh, there was a hand.
Just, I just wanted to thank the council and MKSK for dedicating so much time into the fourth ward, which is where this entire project is.
All right. Thank you so much. We will move now to miscellaneous business. It's wonderful to see you all again. I wanted to give you a couple updates. I wanted to give you a couple updates. Um, one, when I was gone for five days last week, the, doing some training on bipartisan leadership. Um, some of the topics that were covered and that, um, fellowship was, were very, very important to what the kind of work we do here. And it was very much a, a state-level, um, and regional-level look at education and higher education, economic development, where I asked quite a few questions because of our relationship with, um, Renew Moline and, uh, what we're trying to get done here in the city. There were sessions on criminal justice or crime and punishment, if you will, um, from the legal system. Um, wonderful session on environmental, uh, the, the environment actually and transportation. And I've already begun to share some of the information with staff that, um, is working on particular projects or, uh, things we've laid out in the strategic plan. So did my best to, um, communicate that, uh, no one in Illinois should forget about Northwest Illinois. That we don't want to drop off the map, uh, in people's minds. And so, uh, I think I, I did get some good information and shared some good information there. Um, I want to also just, uh, let you know that tomorrow, there's a neighborhood meeting at, I believe it's 6:30 for the Overlook Neighborhood, which I think is second, second ward primarily. Um, that's at the house across from Valley Park. I don't have the exact address, but there's like a big porch and you can't miss it. Um, I, I'm planning to be there. And just a reminder, um, to be, um, studying, there's gonna be a lot to read in the, um, agenda over the weekend. So please make sure you're spending the time on the LRS citing proposal materials that have been sent from, um, legal counsel, so that you're prepared for that, especially prepared for that. Um, that's all I have. Oh, actually, I just want, I hate to put you on the spot. But I, I noted that, um, Park Board is working with a consultant to do the grant writing. Where are we at with our grant manager?
Oh, interviewing.
Okay.
We're in the middle of interviews. Hopefully we'll have a decision, uh, next week.
Okay, and so that would be too soon of a time to ask somebody to take on that project if it goes all the way through?
Too soon.
Okay, just checking. Thank you so much. Ms. Murphy? Mr. Macias?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just, uh, want to remind everybody, summer is almost over. So get out there, go to Mercado. We got the Mole Live, Mole Art Event, um, next week. So make plans to, uh, get out there and enjoy, uh, everything this city has to offer, a lot of which is happening in the second ward. Thank you.
Yes, actually, this, no, that's, I'm thinking of September, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Razak.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Mr. Timmin?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I, uh, I posted on Facebook today, I was able to ride the new stretch of 12th Avenue on my bike and it was fantastic. I've already noticed a calming of traffic. Uh, so I just, I want to thank the engineering department and all the members of council that helped vote for that change in traffic patterns. Yeah, I think it's really benefited the area. I've already received a lot of positive feedback from, uh, people who live around there, expressing that they now feel safe enough to walk their kids down the street, whereas before they didn't. And so just once again, thank you. I'm, I'm always just really happy to see positive improvements in the city.
I saw a kid on a scooter in the lane. I thought that was great, so it's not just bikes.
That's surprising.
It was a kid on a scooter. All right, thank you. Nothing, Your Honor. Mr. Murphy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing. Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas?
Very, very briefly, since we've already mentioned Ball Live, uh, please make sure that you remember that it starts Thursday, uh, with John Deere Company. They are going to be hosting their own event at the Pavilion. It's a musical event, so by all means, please go out to that. Then we will kick off our event on, on Friday and Saturday. And don't forget to touch a truck. You know, it's a great event for those of you with young children. It's probably one of the most popular events that we have. So I, uh, and it, it's all set to go. So we should be good. Great music venues are lined up for, for those two days. And, uh, I want to take this moment just to introduce the new city clerk who is seated behind Amy, uh, Stephanie Murphy. Just kind of wave and smile at everybody. So Stephanie actually started yesterday. And, uh, hopefully it'll be a long tenure with the city leading into her retirement one day. But thank you for joining us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vitas. Mr. Dykessen?
Um, I guess the only thing I have to say about 12th Avenue, so I, I recall that based on feedback I heard.
Thank you. Any other staff? Yes, Chief Gold.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so last, uh, Wednesday, as you saw from emails, we conducted a full-scale exercise at the Moline Police Department, which simulated an active shooter call coming in at just after 7:00 AM. Uh, the incident culminated, uh, with the conclusion just before 3:00 PM. So it tested our entire department. We started with a tabletop exercise that simulated the event, uh, at John Deere seating and then a hostage situation at Bridgepoint where we had obviously control of that property. So I know that previously I had, uh, emailed out you several things about incident command, uh, NIMS training and things of that nature. Uh, this is continually part of our march towards better preparation in the city. I'm sure as many of the emails, if you read them, um, involved simulated things that the city would need to do, city staff would need to do, um, suggestions of, uh, things that elected officials could do to participate in helping the community in the disaster. And certainly we chose an active shooter situation, but these are concepts that can apply to any type of, uh, incident in the city. So I've been working with the city administrator, uh, about continually preparing the rest of city staff. We're gonna bring in some training for that. So I just encourage you, if you could continue to work on the training that we sent, uh, sent out through FEMA, uh, to try to complete that. We're gonna work on some additional training for you as well in person, maybe some tours of different things, so that you can see these things in process. It's not a, uh, an immediate solution. Uh, you know, preparation is ongoing. Uh, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. But the fire department and the police departments in the area will be conducting some training next week and rescue task force will be sent out and media advisory on that. You'll see some information about that. Over 300 police and fire officers will be trained next week at the Vibrant. Um, so just continuing to build on our preparation for our community. And, uh, I think you should be proud of, uh, both police and fire, as well as the city staff that are continually getting better to, uh, be, uh, better prepared for these types of things in our community.
Thank you so much, Chief Gold. Is there a public comment yet this evening? You have public comments, sir?
Yes.
Okay, please come and state your name. You have three minutes.
I'll take one.
Okay.
My name is Jerry Miller. I live on 34th Avenue, Moline. And first comment is, uh, a couple of years ago, the city went and repaved the, the street in Find My House on 34th Avenue. There is no marking for bicycles going through there. I'm glad to see 12th Avenue was done. But it's very unsafe when you, you get out there and it's a lot of traffic there. The second thing is, I would like to request the city put a traffic signal at 41st Street and 34th Avenue in Moline. It's a very busy intersection and it's difficult because of the Moline Public Library light. When it, it goes, holds traffic up there, down below the hill on John Deere Road, you can have traffic that you think you can, can turn either way. Nope, the light turned on the other way and traffic is just backed up a lot of times. So my request is to put a traffic signal there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, if there's no further public comment, I don't believe we have executive session. Not this evening, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second?
That was moved by Macias and I'll take Murphy for the second. I heard her the most. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.